It just doesn't show up there. Thanks to Bob Little, who's out there with us a lot. We talked about, well, let's see if we could get as much of the panel as they have, and we'll take that panel to Link Electric and find all the parts and pieces that are missing all over. We chased all over the country and built it at Link Electric. And if it wasn't for that, we wouldn't have a panel we have out there. However, I must say that if we go to the auto parts store and buy all the parts for a car and build it in our garage, it's not the same price. So we're gonna talk about a little extra there, okay? Anyway, and we've got these things here. So we changed the gas skillet to, I'm sorry, we changed it from electric to gas. So Link Electric's got a small D-Dock there. Bob Little and all of us talked for months about UV lights to make this water and everything much more, and air much more clean. And so we got a change here of $34,650 to put the UV light system all over the air handlers. And there's a lot of air handlers and there's a lot of duct work. So that's one of the items. And again, these have all been reviewed by Phil Wink, Seasoning of the Vava, and John Painter, who's taken over for Jack Kraus, and us on all that. Now, Fortinet wireless upgrade. So in the contract, it was a kind of a generic system. And this Fortinet system will blend in with your standardization system. And it's a better system. It requires more cabling and switching and engineering. And so that's a change of $38,539 at Link Electric. Now, that next item was the story I was telling you about, the switchgear. And this switchgear is a super big, expensive thing. So to get it and do what we had to do was $17,299. And so, I already told the story. We've got a credit here of $5,000. We found that we can use a mil-finished aluminum versus the painted and get a $5,000 credit. Also, we can get it delivered instead of waiting forever for it. So we got a credit there. Now, look at this EH. Let me change gears on you now. See the one here that highlights says EH? Can you see that one in there? Okay. So a lot of times, this project has a ton of duct work on the interior, and this project has a ton of duct work on the exterior, up on the roof. We, if you look at those photos, you see all those little boxes that are sitting there on that roof? There's over 100 of those boxes. We wanted to, instead of that duct work just laying down on treated lumber or something, we wanted to get that up and put it on a very expensive system and so that we can bolt that down. So when we have a big storm out here someday, all this duct work doesn't blow away. So that was a change in design. We got all the duct work, I mean, we got all those support systems. We talked the mechanical guy into building those. But the roofer has to go in roof over all for one of those and put new flashing on the top. And there's 100 and over 100 of them on there. That change is, where is that change? It's $49,000. Oh, yeah, that's it. Curb supports, $49,000 for that. Next item, Hussing, and we all talked about that, Jack Kraus and all of us. There were a certain number of water shut-off valves throughout that building, but we needed to add a whole bunch more because you don't want to be crawling all over a building like that trying to cut water off whenever you need it. So we wanted to make that more convenient. And that is, that is, okay guys, I'm sorry. I got here something. That was $22,417. Okay, in the kitchen, there's an area there where duct work was exposed, and we wanted to build it. We thought it'd be better to build a new soffit all over that area and cover all that up. And that's in the EH one, and that is $2,519 to build soffit work over that. And now, mobile shelving. So in the very beginning of the job, we took $40,000 away off of the contract of EH so we could decide what we wanted to do with that shelving. The shelving that was shown on the plans, we took that out. But we've gone back in and looked at this now for property storage and inmate clothing and evidence. And so we went with the sheriff's staff. We studied, we've been studying for months to find the best solution for you, long term. And the shelving and all that and the mobile shelving. And that's, oh, now remember, that change shows on EH, that change shows $66,275, but $40,000 that was credited out in the beginning. So the net effect of that, overall net effect is $26,275. So basically, this is something we'd like to get caught up with and cleaned up and formalized. Again, we've been through this with DLZ and the Jack Kraus Company. And that's what I have here. Now, with your permission, I'll go through these real quick. So if you look at EH, see the highlight? I think that's orange, Bob. I'm sure it's that orange. I can get you on color. Post it up. The soffit work, these things we talked about, the soffit work is $25,19. The change in the mobile shelving, $66,275. The credit of $5,000 in roofing over that other, over all those units, $113,300. That's the EH things that we talked about. Link Electric, if you see them, I think we got those highlighted, yellowed. We got the credit on the skillet. We got the Fortinet system that we talked about. And we got the breakers and feeders and disconnects where we rebuilt those, or built new those switchgear. Total of $55,565. And then in the Hussing, the UV air filters, $34,650, and the shut-off valves, $22,417, for a total of $57,067. These are your copies to keep. But what we would like to have, Mr. Chairman, we'd like to have a permission to get those approved. And there's a place for you to sign there at the bottom. And I think Bobby, I mean Bob, I shouldn't say Bobby. Bob Little's been with us out there all the time in all the meetings, and he's up to date on all this. And I think we went, we've gone through this in weeks and months, and I think we feel as good about it. And like I say, the contingency fund is in great shape. We're in good shape budget-wise. Things are going well. It's just something we need to get signed up and moving forward. Okay? All right.
Might as well. Move, we accept the change order for Hassan, Hussing, Hussing? Mechanical for $57,067. The change order for Link Electric for $55,565. And change order for EH Construction for $113,300.
What I will do is, Mr. Chairman, if I can get a signature from you on all those, I'll get Philip Wink to sign to see if he couldn't make it. And then I'll get the signed copies back to you with all the signatures, okay? I'll have to make copies, but if I can get your signature as well. Sorry. I wanted to let you know Philip wasn't here to sign. That's our problem. Didn't he?
I just would like to say, on the Fortinet switches, the reason we did that because here is two Fortinet and the other places. So that way, instead of having Cisco and Winxus and all that, we're all unified. And that was the reason for that. Which they're very, they're tough. So I second that motion.
Any more discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Thank you, Ron. We've got three signatures there. I'll give you Architect's signature. I'm gonna head up to Fort Wayne Monday morning.
That must have came off real quick, didn't it?
Yeah.
Unless I know the meeting before, he was weak after his treatment, but I don't know how his question was that quick.
Well, you know, John told me that Kathy, his wife, didn't really want to say, you know. Let me take a quick look, Ron. One, two. Okay, guys, thank you. Thank you. And thank you for putting us on the front. Abby didn't have to wait. She does like spaghetti, so we're gonna go work with some spaghetti on there, okay? She doesn't like pizza, but she likes spaghetti.
Likes spaghetti.
Does that make any sense? Okay, Abby? Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Be careful going back.
Thank you. Thanks for everything.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Face. Looks like faithful, doesn't it?
So first thing we have is, there is a resolution supporting, it's supporting Operation Greenlight for veterans. Some other counties have passed, and so we thought we would like to try and get this resolution passed in our county. Basically, it says, "Whereas the residents of Jefferson County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude of all of the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community and the armed forces, and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas Jefferson County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all, and whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health disability compensation benefits each year, and whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future, and whereas studies indicate that 44 to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life, and whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service, and whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Greenlight for veterans, and whereas the Jefferson County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel, believes specific recognition should be granted, therefore be it resolved with designation as a Greenlight for Veterans County. Jefferson County hereby declares from October through Veterans Day, November 11, 2022, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service, therefore be it further resolved and in observance of Operation Greenlight. Jefferson County encourages its citizens and patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made their, who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence. And our office is going to order a case of green light bulbs, so if anybody would like to stop by, we're hoping they'll be in next week to pick one up and just display it, you know, on your porch or your porch light. And it's just in support of, you know, showing our veterans that, you know, community supports them. And I know this community does. I've seen it firsthand. I'm a veteran, my husband's a veteran. Being the service officer for our county, I've seen it. So this was just one more thing that we can do to show our veterans support, so.
I make a motion to pass the resolution called Operation Greenlight for Veterans.
Second time. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Thank you. And the only other thing I have is that, well, first of all, so the Jefferson County Veterans Council will be helping to put on the Veterans Day event. That will be November 10th, this Thursday, at 5:00 PM at the Brown Gym. We'll have a dinner, and we'll have gift bags and some speakers and patriotic music. I, we just had a meeting on this, and so I was working on the flyers this afternoon and forgot to bring them with me. But I'll get them emailed to everybody, and we'll get them posted around. November 10th at 5:00 PM at the Brown Gym is our Veteran Day event. And the only other thing I have is our third quarter report for our office. Let's see, we filed 664 claims. We had 179 in-office appointments, 270 walk-in appointments. I had 18, I attended 18 veteran meetings, 29 home visits. I traveled 744.9 miles. We had 555 incoming phone calls and 601 outgoing phone calls. I filed 302 service-connected disability claims, 29 veterans' pension claims, 62 widows' pension claims. We had 24 property tax abatements, and then 247 other VA or IDVA forms. That could be Military Family Relief Fund, Financial Assistance Grants, Discounted Hunting and Fishing License, things of those natures. And then, and again, these figures are not exact. It's just going off of the rating decision letters that are brought into my office once a veteran becomes service-connected. So I try and keep track of that. So so far, monthly awards for the third quarter are $13,411.99. Annual awards of $160,943.88. And then back pay, that's the retro back pay, of $47,582.10. I will just say, this last quarter was probably, I think, one of the busiest we've ever had, so. Hope it slowed down a little bit. But with that being said, again, just a reminder, the PACT Act was passed. They added 21 new conditions to the presumptive condition list for our Gulf War veterans, and they added two new conditions for our Vietnam veterans. The biggest one was being, was, is hypertension or high blood pressure. Been waiting on that one for a while, so we're glad to see that get passed. The other one for the veterans, Vietnam veterans, is a blood disorder. I've never heard of it before. But, so there were two, again, two conditions added on to our Vietnam veteran presumptive condition list, and 21 conditions for our Gulf War veterans. That's good. And so that's part of the reason why we've really ticked up again as far as seeing veterans and filing claims. It's, so.
Would be nice if we could state the law veterans' pre-pony condition.
Yeah, right now, yeah. Yeah. And that's the thing, you know, when you're a disabled veteran, those state benefits do vary from state to state. So right now, I think ours is paid $2.75 a year, or they can do it for 10 years at a time, which still isn't bad. But yeah, that would be nice. And so, you know, the Indiana County Veteran Service Officer Association, we're working on these kinds of things. Again, it's, you know, it's gonna have to go before the state, so.
Like a state representative could spearhead something like that.
Yes, yes.
I'd be more than happy to help you with that.
Okay. That would be great. And other than that, that's all I've got right now. Oh, we did have our stand-down last Friday. I think we had, and I haven't tallied everything up, I think we had about 75 veterans, and then I don't know how many family members attended, probably about another 30 or so. So it was a pretty good turnout. It was a tri-county stand-down. I think the bulk of the veterans that showed up were from Jefferson County, so way to go Jefferson County, representing. But it was good. We had a good turnout, a lot of good feedback, so I'm pleased with it.
So is this the first time for the Gulf War?
So the, yeah, I mean, there was a very small presumptive condition list that's been out since I've been the county service officer. And it, so this is the first time in I don't know how many years that they actually ended up adding conditions on to that list. So, and there were, like I said, there were 21. That's a lot of conditions to add, so, yeah. So the other thing is, we're trying to really encourage our younger generation, our Gulf War veterans, to come into our office to see what benefits they qualify for. A lot of the older generation, they're fabulous. I have a lot of, you know, Vietnam, Korean War, some, still some World War II, but really, we want to really encourage our Gulf War veterans to get in and see your county service officer and see what you qualify for. That's all I've got.
Thank you. You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Time to read this one, huh? This one is ordinance terminating the cable advisory board. Ordinance number 2022-dash-something. An interlocal agreement of Madison Hanover, Jefferson County, Indiana terminating cable advisory board. Whereas Madison Hanover, Jefferson County, Indiana all have individual cable television franchise fees being received directly to the entities. Whereas these local government units entered into and in their local agreement of Madison Hanover, Jefferson County, Indiana establishing a cable advisory board dated September 5, 2001. Whereas these local government units are desirous of terminating the cable advisory board hereinafter referred to as CAB, and distributing the funds and equipment held, being held by the CAB. Whereas these local government units are desirous of distributing 10,000 being held in currently by the CAB back to Jefferson County, Indiana, as it was recently paid into the CAB funds. Whereas these local government units are desirous of giving the camera and tripod approximate value of 4,000 back to Jefferson County, Indiana. Whereas these local government units are desirous of returning the balance of funds held by CAB equally to the City of Madison and the Town of Hanover. Whereas the surplus equipment being held in the basement of City Hall, the City of Madison should be sold as part of the city's surplus auction with these items being held out separately. These funds raised from sale of these items shall be divided equally between the City of Madison, Town of Hanover, and Jefferson County. Now, therefore, it is agreed as follows. The interlocal agreement dated September 5, 2001 is hereby terminated. Jefferson County, Indiana shall be paid 10,000 from the CAB funds. Town of Hanover, Indiana, and the City of Madison, Indiana each shall receive one half of the remaining balance of the CAB funds after payment to Jefferson County, Indiana, outlined herein. Jefferson County, Indiana shall receive CAB's cameras and tripod. City of Madison, Town of Hanover, and Jefferson County, Indiana shall split the proceeds from the auction sale of remaining equipment and miscellaneous items held in the basement of City Hall. The City of Madison shall ensure these surplus items will be accounted for separately as it is surplus auction sale. The City of Madison, Indiana Clerk Treasurer is instructed to take the necessary steps to effectuate the terms of this agreement. This ordinance shall become effective from and after its stated passage. Ordained and passed by the Board of Jefferson County Commissioners. First reading. Right? And next, this Capital Asset Management Ordinance Amendment. Second reading.
Yes, we are just amending that, and we've discussed it several times. We are just changing the threshold to $10,000 instead of $3,000. And we are putting some reporting requirements on the departments to get that information into us so that we can have everything properly reported for State Board of Councillors.
So this will be second reading, unless?
I make a motion, we forego the additional readings of ordinance number 22 dash, where it's gonna be, an ordinance amending the fixed asset capitalization policy.
Second time. Any discussion? Other questions? Not all those in favor say aye. All right.
Emma, you go, Ron?
Yep.
Okay. So move, we approve the ordinance number 2022-dash.
I don't know. I got lost.
Figure out that number. An ordinance amending the fixed asset capitalization policy. This required by State Board of Councillors.
Second stage motion.
Any more questions or comments? Not all those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay. Next is the Sheriff's Sale Ordinance. Second reading.
I make a motion to forego the additional readings of the, an ordinance to establish the Sheriff's Sale Program and Service Fee.
So, second time.
Not all those in favor say aye. Aye. It's a, they have an ordinance number, so we'll just say the Sheriff's Ordinance.
X plus one.
Yeah.
So, move, we pass the ordinance to establish a Sheriff's Sales Program and Service Fee. Ordinance number 22-dash X plus one.
To be determined. Second stage motion.
More discussion or questions? Not all those in favor say aye. Aye. And Spyglass Telecom. Audit.
So probably five years ago, maybe six? Somewhere in that ballpark, we had someone look at all our telecommunications contracts and service agreements and found a few things that where we gained some savings back. And so we've had another company come and approach us, and we thought it's probably time. We've had a couple of changes. So it's good just to go through and make sure that every agreement is what we need and not more, and that we're not getting charged for things that we really have, have no need for. And if we decide not to implement their recommendations, or some of them, then there's no charge for those. But if they do, if they, if there's a cost recovery, meaning they've found fees that we've paid over time, then they'll get a portion of that. They get 50% of that. If we have service or a cost reduction, so these are going forward, then they'll get paid basically a year's worth of savings for that, but then we'll continue to receive those savings, so. And Pat looked at it, and a couple of questions, and just looking at how we, these payment terms. And so I'm, I think I'm okay with talking to them. We're supposed to talk with them this week and say, how, let's talk about how this works out and kind of negotiate it, and then pass it at the next meeting. That's okay with you?
I think we need to investigate.
Yeah, just to make sure. Because it sounds like they want it up front, and you have to pay them after we get the savings.
That's binding, right?
Yeah, well, that's for, that's sure, but rather than, when they, when they give us their recommendation and we say, yeah, we're gonna implement it, they want to get paid at that point. And so we want to negotiate that.
I believe the one on communications, they got paid after the end when they found it and all that, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's, yeah, and that would be the same here, but like I said, if they, if we implement one of these service elimination savings, then whatever that is, they want to get paid at that point rather than waiting until. And so just, we'll negotiate those terms to be a little more than, right, the quote unquote, for the savings right away. But I think it is time just to go and look, because... it is time just to go and look because, you know, I mean, we, we get into these agreements and we think we were okay with, but if you've looked at your, your phone, your cell phone bill or internet bill, and you're wondering about all those things, there's certain things that your county taxes shouldn't be paying, and they put those in there like that. So, we'll take that up at the next meeting, but we'll, we'll have some discussion with them on that, negotiate those terms.
Table. Conflict of interest form.
Yeah, actually, I kept all the papers. I didn't get shuffled around. So every year we do conflict of interest forms for the employees that are in, you know, they have a business or they're a part of a business that we might use on an as needed basis. So it's always the same for employees and things like that. So I have Larry Sedam, he's part owner of Sedam Upholstery. Occasionally, they'll do some seat repairs for the highway department or any other sheriff's department, whoever needs repairs. And we also have David Sparkman. He owns D and T Seal Coating and Striping. Upon occasion, we've used him in the past for the parking lots. Vicki Weiner, she is part owner of Family Time Catering. We use her a few times a year for various county events for catering. And then we also have Commissioner Bobby Little. He's a part-time employee of Electrotech that is used on an as needed basis for electrical networking and camera and security systems. So, but these are just annual forms that we have to have filled out.
So you can't vote, well.
Right, so you could do, yeah, you could do Larry.
I could vote on that. Do the first two.
Yeah, Larry Sedam, David Sparkman, and Vicki Weiner.
But, I mean, I could do all of them, and then we'll vote individually on them, and then you just, we'll stay on the last one. So. A move we just accept, that was it? Accept the conflict of interest of Larry Sedam for Sedam Upholstery seat repairs. I guess we'll, I'll put those three together, and we can do with them. Except the, accept the conflict of interest for David Sparkman, who's part owner of D and T Seal Coating and Striping, and the conflict of interest for Vicki Weiner, who's part owner of Family Time Catering, as presented.
I will second that motion. All right, any more questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So make a motion to accept the conflict of interest for Robert Little as a part-time employee for Electrotech in various electrical and security systems jobs.
You gotta have to.
You can.
I make a motion to accept the conflict of interest for Bobby Little. Second.
Okay.
Okay.
Who's on first? I don't know. Third place.
All right, so let's finish this. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I abstain, you abstain.
You're good.
You're good.
I'm ready to go.
Yeah, then we got the holidays and commissioner dates meetings, and they, they change once. Well, holidays don't change very often, thank goodness. They seem to stay about the same. Commissioner meetings are, will be posted. They change once in a while, location or times or.
Well, I just, everybody was asked their questions whenever, so I just throw out everything that they saw.
I see. So it's 2023, we got 2024.
Make a motion to accept 2023 holidays as submitted, and the 2023 commissioner meeting dates as submitted, subject to change. Except for the holidays.
Yep. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now for the fun part.
Love it.
Yeah.
No, is he out there?
Yes.
Oh, he is, oh, fun part.
Yeah.
I don't know about that.
I'll brush his work still.
It's, yeah, still, parts that's still closed. We're definitely moving quite a bit in the terriers.
Down there yesterday.
I'll come back to that because I got to make sure I get the important one done first. I need you guys to declare an emergency on East Prong Road for that structure that collapsed. So I can reach out and see how quick I can get that one repaired.
Pretty spry, you have a number on it?
Do I have a number as a bridge? No, it's, it's technically a small structure, but everybody knows it as a bridge because it's less than 20 feet.
Little word like thing.
Yeah, I think the, I think the address on it, I think is like 6,000 something. East Prong is home in the house close to it, so.
Pull the camera out here so it's more.
I noticed that when I was back down there the other day.
People shipping one of those.
So, I mean, we declare an emergency for the bridge at 6,000, Prong. Prong Road.
Yeah, this one's separate from the Peter.
Second.
With that declaration in place, I have reached out to All-Star Paving, K L B.
One more, one more step.
Oh, yes. Sorry, I'm very good. You're good, you're good.
That's the second time I've been slowed down with the paving outfit.
No, not twice.
Any more questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
All right, yeah, I'm, I'm ready to go. I've got my ducks in a row on this. I've reached out to All-Star Paving, K L B Excavating, McCallister Excavating, and O'Meara, and they've all told me they have the capacity to be able to submit these quotes for this at the, will be, I think my letter that we have written up is that it opened at 9:00 or 9:30 at the highway department, and I'll make sure that that's known, and they will have those quotes. And if everything's acceptable and timeframe all matches up, then we'd be ready to proceed with that at the next meeting. Hope, I don't. Hopefully it won't be delayed very long, like everything else. We've got enough delays.
Tomorrow, you're going to open the bid?
No, no, no. Tomorrow, I can give them the letter and the rest of the paperwork so that they can get all their quotes together, and then we'll be opening the quotes. 20th, October 20th, we'll be opening those to highway department.
Okay.
Repairs are underway. After we had our meeting with FEMA, we've been trying to get some of those holes filled up. And when I say holes, I mean they're going to gobble up lots of tons, and just takes a lot of time to get there and get everything maneuvered around. So I, we're always getting questions whether something's open and we can get there. We're trying, but it's going to be a little bit of a long process. I'm trying to push to see if we can even get those far enough along that the possibility of getting some of that asphalt replaced will even be a possibility this fall. That painting window's closing pretty fast here as the days can kind of continue to cool off. So we'll see how that goes. At the next meeting, I will be announcing an advertisement for a bid opportunity on 750 North, as we'll be replacing a structure out there that we've been working on here for just a little bit. This, this will just, it's just information basically because we'll start that advertising next week, and then the plans will be ready to go out and proceed with those. And hopefully, we'll see if that construction can start late this year, early spring. So, depending on contractor, maybe. One thing that I did want to update, I know the stoplight kind of acted up on us there for just a little bit there on Michigan Road. For whatever reason, it wanted to stay solid red. It didn't flash, didn't want to do anything. Reached out to the engineer and caught up with Tony Sorrells to meet me up there, and we was able to push that button, and that worked again. So, yep, yep. And that's, that's what I was hoping was going to be the case. That, yeah, it worked again and going, and I did kind of ask to see if that's something we should trace or look at, because that's only the second time that it's had any hiccups whatsoever. So, kind of like your, your car when it acts up, you take it to the mechanic or the garage, and it's not acting up, and there's not really much they can do. So we'll continue to kind of monitor that, and hopefully there won't be any other issues. I think the last time I was out there was a power outage, was had it confused. Yeah. Yeah, and at least that time it was flashing red all directions. This time it's just solid reds. And we'll announce, we will be selling some equipment to kind of keep an eye out on gov deals as we kind of move some of the equipment that hasn't been used or we've replaced with some of the new equipment that's been purchased. So we can kind of keep those things going while the market is still very strong for those as we kind of try to recoup those salvage dollars as best we can. Outside of that, I think that's all I've got this evening, gentlemen, unless you guys have any questions for me.
Very good. Some of you guys out and about working all the time.
It's, yeah, everybody's a mover, that's for sure. So, thank you, guys.
Keep it safe.
Definitely.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I was reminding the dads, you get those emails all the time where DOT worker or somebody's been injured or killed on a road place. I'm always trying to remind them. So, you almost got to have your head on a swivel just to drive down the interstate these days. Thank you.
Thank you. Troy, you're next. Dave being out there, is he?
I haven't seen him. Good evening. Good evening. Just a couple of things real quick, just a couple of updates. You guys mentioned brushing folk there just a minute ago. Bobby and I met earlier this week with representatives from Department of Homeland Security for their preliminary pre-validation briefing, whatever they want to call it, another step of the process. But about, see, I guess it was last week, Wednesday, Thursday, I think it was, the governor signed the state declaration, which was the next step before we could send that on to get the federal declaration, which would release the federal funds or FEMA funds. The question came up about the state disaster relief fund, since the governor had signed that. And the state disaster relief fund, I was going to, to make sure everybody's aware of this, that the state disaster relief fund has thresholds the same as FEMA. And for property owners or private individuals, that threshold for those state funds to be utilized, there has to be 25 primary residences with four, that has sustained 40% or more of uninsured loss. So that was not the case in this incident, unfortunately. So there still will be, well, for the. There's no right way to say it. I don't, I've had that conversation before, so, but fortunately for, for the homeowners out there, there's, there's no, no state assistance that's going to be available for that. We can't, you know, when, when we do the damage assessments, we can't include the ancillary and other outbuildings and structures. We can't include the coops and the barns and the sheds and all that, or the equipment or trailers or the tractors or whatever. It has to be only the primary residence. That's all that can be included. So unfortunately, that threshold won't be met. The, I don't know if Bobby mentioned it in hearing, but when we were in that briefing with the Department of Homeland Security the other day, the federal threshold for public assistance for the build, for the bridges and the roads and the dams, et cetera, for those types of structures, was 11 and a half million dollars. Was it Bobby the day before or a couple of days before that?
That's what she mentioned.
That DHS was notified that FEMA had increased that threshold to 12 and a half million.
I didn't ask what you get grandfathered into that.
Yeah, I'm not real sure how, I mean, yeah, we, you know, the, the declaration was made long before that increase came about, so I don't know how that, I don't know how that will play out. But nonetheless, it's going up another million dollars. So we think we're, we're still in that ballpark or we're in that range. Part of that meeting that they were here to talk about earlier in the week was, was to try and get a better feel for that. So, so that's still being in the works, and hopefully that'll be sent on to, to, to Washington. We'll have some news back on that. So, but right now, that's, that's all we've got. Any questions on brushing for the next process? On the Hanover building, just real quick, I am in the process and I've met with Heather on getting some advice from her as far as process is concerned. You know, we've got a couple of things that we've all talked about, or we've talked about, about the building and making it ready, or that we could make it even usable. We knew we had to expose the overhead door. We knew we had to replace that 50-year-old door. And that, that, that door's an interesting thing to do when you push that up. Like, I can't stand to push the button and look at the door at the same time. I'm afraid it's just going to fall off the track. Anyway, it does go up and down, so the building is usable. But we've, we've got another door coming, but it's, the, the track itself was a low clearance track. It wasn't a standard track, and apparently that, that's a backwatered item, and we're waiting to get that, so that's why it's not been done yet. But, but that should be done hopefully sooner rather than later. The other thing is for safety purposes, the gas forced air backup heat source hangs directly in the middle of the ceiling. Hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we're going to have that relocated, and we've got that marked and all that. That process has begun, but the work's not been done yet. But just backing trailers and driving trucks and they're pulling trailers and stuff. It's just not, you know, well, I'm afraid. I always make sure that I have somebody standing underneath with a whistle so that if somebody gets too close, we could, you know, make sure that.
One of the back corners.
Yeah, probably where the, is that the south? Southeast corner is where, is where the gas comes into the building. So, this, we'll probably put it in that corner somewhere, wherever this is close and it's easiest, be less expensive that way, or less, less, less relocating. So I think that's the path of least resistance. So, but that, that's on track to get that done, and that will at least get the building usable. And it is, the security system is, is there, is armed, and it's protected that way. We've changed the lock cores to match the cores with this building. So, little things that we've had to do to get it done are done. But then I've also started to construct a spreadsheet of just rough estimates of what we think it's going to cost to do, the other things that need to be done as far as, you know, adding that building to this building's camera system, and adding that building to this building's electronic access door system, and those sorts of things. You know, install a water heater, and just all the other little things that aren't, aren't as critical to do as the first thing. So we're getting that done. Hopefully, I'll have that for you guys to look at before your next meeting. And then I'm going to brief the council at their meeting on Tuesday, even though that, that spreadsheet probably be read for their eyes yet either, but just to kind of prepare them for, you know, the ballpark figure. Right now, they figure minus miscellaneous and labor costs, and then other, any other increases that are, you know, happen daily, it seems like. We're somewhere in the neighborhood of 55 or 60,000 dollars for everything. That doesn't, you know, that includes everything that's already kind of been processed. But we'll try to get them to identify those funds and get processed with Heather's help done and work through that, see if we can get her stuff done. But it's on track as well, and the building's secure and everything that's in there is secure. But there's just a couple of, it's the domino thing. You have to have this to be able to do that, and to be able to use it for the intended purpose. So we're working on it every day, and we're, we're moving in the right direction. So, that's all I got. Any questions for, for me? Okay, thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks, Troy. Yep, I see it right there. Erica, you have a, don't give us a little update, I believe, weren't you?
Yeah. So, we have a broadband blog. When you guys passed the ordinance, I feel like it was in the summer, for our county to be a broadband-ready community. The state gave me steps on how we should go about getting more broadband into all of Jefferson County. And so the step that we're at right now with the task force is finding that funding to help us with those projects. The USDA had a program that, that actually fits our county perfectly. However, the mapping. The mapping is incorrect. Back in 2009, well, prior to 2009, a corporation by the name of Sunman Corporation, they had received funding from the USDA to blanket or protect Jefferson County by providing wireless options for Jefferson County. Those speeds are no longer fast speeds for the county, and they've already paid off their loan. They're not servicing Jefferson County. loan, they're not servicing Jefferson County anymore, this is old, but that old data is still on that map that the USDA wanted us to use in order to apply for that grant. So, I'm going through what's a process of, I can't think of the word right now, but basically disagreeing and showing proof of how Jefferson County is not being shown the correct data. For example, they have that Jefferson County only has 19% of their county without internet access, and that 76% of the county has broadband, and that's completely false. And then on, if you go to the broadband blog that I have on the website, I put a couple maps on there, and one of the maps that you guys can look at, you can see where Jefferson County is, and then all of the areas that are in red are the areas that are not being served what the state considers adequate internet service, which is the 253 number, upload and download speeds. So all of these areas in the red don't have those speeds, however, the mapping that is used to apply for the funding to help our county out shows that they are receiving those speeds. So, it's very important to try and promote, the task force is trying to come up with some type of campaign to promote people to either go to the library, or any place in the county that offers internet, and apply for the next level, the next level connections program. They have a, there was a press release that went out, and in that press release, it mentions how much money and how many locations actually have received funding from this connectivity program, but it's an individual thing, it's not something, so if you live in an area that was in the red, like I just showed you, and you're wanting to get better broadband in your area, you have to go on the site, and you have to create a username, and you have to put in your address and that information. Now, if someone calls me, I can definitely, you know, speak to the right people and talk about that area, but this Indiana connectivity program that they have, it's for the individual resident, or it's for an individual business. And if anybody wants help on doing something like that, I can definitely help them, but also with this program, if you are actually awarded any type of funding assistance through this program, whoever is going to be supplying that internet to you, whoever your internet service provider is going to be, they have actually... They have nine months from the contract date to complete that project and get you that service that you're needing. Yeah, the numbers were, let's see here, they awarded $760,000, over $760,000 to expand broadband access to 197 addresses in Indiana. So, you know, if you're in Jefferson County and you're not getting broadband, I can't stress enough how much importance it is for you to get on that website and just put your address in, that's all they want, they just want an address because the mapping for Jefferson County to apply for funding is inaccurate, and until we can get accurate data, then proving, proving that is very difficult.
You're forced to use that inaccurate map, right?
Right now, yeah, right now, I have been in direct contact with the state, the Indiana Office of Broadband, and they are having a meeting Friday, and I submitted some questions to the state that the state is going to submit to the USDA. Then they'll get back with me, and we'll see what that rebuttals process is, more specifically. The only other thing I had besides broadband really that I needed to bring up was currently the revolving loan fund that we started in the beginning with COVID. That balance right now, after I checked with the auditor's office and the treasurer's office, is $121,201.05. So, the 12 original businesses that were awarded when, that we, that you guys gave the loan to, that loan is about to come to an end. So, I've talked with the county attorney, and he has all the information on it, and when he gets back with me, then we'll start the process of, you know, you guys reaching out to only small businesses. That's one thing that the state said, that we cannot, we cannot fund not-for-profits, it has to be a small business, and you guys will have a scoring sheet, all that kind of stuff, just like before, we have to follow the same protocol as before, as far as how we go about getting those businesses and such.
Should we revise the program and make it more, instead of a loan, just a grant? Do they look more favorably upon that, or do they want...
They would have originally, in the beginning, liked for us to have done that, but since we started the program with it being a revolving loan program, the state wants us to continue to revolve it until it's exhausted.
Okay.
And if we don't start using some of it, they want it back, right?
No, no, they won't take it back, but you only can use it for that purpose.
So you either use it or it sits there, right?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
You don't have to, you also, since this is an amount of money that is slowly diminishing, you don't have to necessarily loan out the same amounts every time either. Those amounts can, that's up to your discretion as a board.
But they want the similar kind of setup, but you can...
Yes, it's still, it's still something, the terms will still be the same as far as when you loan that money to that small business, they have no interest, that they will be getting accumulated on them, and after two years, that remaining portion is forgiven to them, and they will make the monthly payments, yeah, everything's still the same with that. But it doesn't have to be 12, it can be more, it can be less, it doesn't have to be the same amount, it can be less or more as well. And that number that I gave you, it changes so quickly because everybody is making a payment every month, until they're finished, which will be, you know, the end of this year.
Working through that.
Good work, you know, I see Ramisha showed up back there.
Oh, yeah, Ramisha, she's got all kinds of good stuff to say.
You want to bring it down, or?
Yeah, absolutely.
Here, I'll let you sit here. Yes, I'm a big... So, what I brought was a checklist for the region I found that we never started working on, and then kind of the reason on the back why we are gonna have to wait and hope that they'll do another, I'll get a copy for her. And why we're gonna hope that they'll do around five, which I'm thinking is likely that they will, because when I was reading up on it, there's billions of dollars that they, because I'm on this side, maybe a little bit better, that they are allocated for that, and so far, with how much they've awarded with each round, it doesn't seem like they've exhausted that yet, and they do plan on doing rounds until it's exhausted, so I'm confident there will be around five, and that is just some of the things that we'll need to do in the meantime to be prepared, so that we can confidently get together an application, be ready for that, and then on the very back is the map, that is what Erica discovered as to why we ended up not being able to apply this time. So, I outlined Jefferson County in pink, and basically you can see we're 97%, 98% covered by gray, that's the current FCC map, and then that little box up to the right shows that it's under the status with Sunman Telecom as the protective broadband borrower. But what we discovered is that that's, that loan that had that protective status is expired as of, was it like 2010?
2010, 2009.
Yeah, so, a long time ago, but they haven't updated the map for some reason, so we ran into that barrier, and the other information on those pages is just the information about the challenge process, that we're trying to figure out how to submit, what information we'll need to submit to get that corrected, so that the next round, and hopefully again, should be before round five, so that the next round will, that will be removed, and it will show how much of us is unserved, and then we unserved, and then we'll be able to pick out the service area that you feel would be a good fit for the reconnect program. So that's, basically, that's all. It's a little bit, that's like a one-pager for that challenge process, it seemed a bit complicated, of course, it's never as easy as it seems, but they really were, they really did, in the webinar that I attended, do a good job of showing that they're willing to walk us through step by step for when we are in, I think you can still submit challenges right now, which I'm not sure if we have enough data, because that involves getting like the addresses of who doesn't have service, and showing that if there's any existing, there's maps that's related to that specific program, that will show like, oh, this address is wrong, or it's logged in incorrectly, or whatever the issue is, or that there's nothing there, so there's different categories that they have for logging, which ones you want to show where there's no internet, or maybe there is there, you know, whatever the designation is, so we're working on it, but that's just a rundown.
I was just gonna say, one other thing that we both liked about the program, that we wanted to apply for, was that there is no procurement process on who we choose...
Yes.
...as the internet provider that we want to work with.
Yeah, so you would just go through whatever regular process the county does to procure, but we do have to have a provider partner, that is the only thing, is that does have to be done before you apply, unfortunately, I was thinking you could go ahead and get the funds and procure them later, and they're like, no, because some of the, what the provider prices are able to provide later, and some of the other things kind of depend on what is granted, and that could mess up if it ends up being that, whatever numbers you did, you know, that the primary's like, oh, actually, we have to charge more, and that will mess up things, so, so, yeah, that's, that's what we're confident, question?
I have a question, so is, am I understanding a challenge is that each individual that doesn't have internet connectivity in the county has to individually contact, email or contact this site to be able to say they don't have it? I mean, would that be a huge challenge to try and get each person to do that?
It would, so I believe citizens can, individuals can, correct me if I'm wrong, do you remember hearing anything in the webinar?
Can challenge in this?
Yeah, with the blanket challenge.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I don't, I think, I honestly, the process is a little bit complicated, so I would say the average citizen should not worry about trying to do that themselves, instead, they should contact the broadband task force with the county and give us that address, so that we can have a list, and we'll go through and enter those for them, but what citizens can do, what Erica was talking about, was the state's Indiana connectivity program, and that's where you can go on to that portal yourself and register your address and give that information, and it puts it in that portal so that the service providers in the state can bid on it. Doesn't guarantee that your address will get bid on, but it is at least something, and it's something that's aware, that's more data for the state that they have listed addresses, whether they were bid on or not, whether they're awarded or not, as to who doesn't have, who's considered non-served, and, yeah, so we, I can definitely give you that information.
Well, how do you expect to get the community to respond?
That is what we're working on, and if you have any ideas, we would love to hear. Yeah, yeah, that's exactly what we're working on, is awareness, raising awareness about this program, you know, I really would like to maybe even do like a registration drive, I'm still trying to figure out how to coordinate that, the logistics of that, but, yeah, that's definitely, so if you have any ideas, please, please, I'll give you my card, but, yeah, that's definitely something that the broadband task force, we're all working on, so, thank you.
Get you a truck with a loudspeaker and drive you.
Yeah. We might like to get the radios to blast it out during the, everybody, it's 1:00, go register your address if you don't have internet.
This Saturday is soup stew chili and brew, and Main Street will be wall-to-wall people. That would be a good place to have a booth, you know, to set up down there with signs.
A little early, but...
Oh, is it too soon?
Well, you know what, no, I'm just saying that might be...
It might be too late to get it for this year.
Yeah, but I could definitely just print stuff out and hand it out to people, so that's a good idea.
But this, there will be thousands of people from all over the county.
Okay, thank you, thank you, that's really...
Yes, I do, it's in my purse.
Yeah. Any other questions on that?
Do they have, like, if you get this forward and you get your provider, do they have any kind of cap? Some people get by 22, maybe, somebody might need 500, or maybe I need to...
No, it just, it's actually the minimum, so whatever provider that you decide to partner with for the reconnect, they have to be able to provide 120, yeah, that's the only thing, but no, if they can go above, absolutely, that'd be awesome. Yeah, that's the only, and then I think also what's on that checklist is that it has to be a provider, I believe that they're stipulating has to be somebody that also participates in the portable connectivity program, which might limit some choices, if not all, all the major, like, national providers, you know, AT&amp;T, they do participate, but it might kind of limit some of the local providers, unfortunately, so unless they're going to change their mind and decide to just pay if there's any of that or not, so that's the only caveat there that it's looking like, I will, I will get that confirmed, but that's what it seems like on that paragraph where I highlighted in purple, that's what it seems like to me, so, I kind of hate that, but it is what it is, so, yeah.
I'm glad you disputed that.
Yes, yeah, I'm glad Erica caught it, like, that's really, that's really cool, so, yeah, I just went into the mapping tool and just kind of printed out what she found, and added, oh, yeah, and the black dots, that was my little hand writing. That, what that is, is I added a layer where it shows what has been awarded in ARDOF, I'm guessing one of the most recent rounds of that, so you can see where part of like SEI has part of it down in like the south, trying to think, southeast, part of the county, yes, and then Time Warner has like a little sliver down there towards the south, too, and that would essentially be not, we can't have any service areas in there because they've already been awarded with ARDOF, and those would not be eligible, so that's just to show what that layer is, the rest of it, if we can get that gray removed, is fair game.
Good deal.
Yeah, yeah, well, fair game minus whatever else may have been awarded in other options in the meantime, so I'm sure, you know, Charter and whoever else that might have gotten some will have to go around those areas as well, but that's not much.
Yeah, I mean, I have it, I have it on my email, like, we have, Sarah shares it on the Facebook page, we had a booth at the fair, and I feel like, after we had the booth at the fair, I got quite a few phone calls, every now and then someone will reach out to you guys, and someone will call me, and then when I tell them what we were doing behind the scenes, they're blown away, they didn't know. I am really struggling at trying to get everyone in the community to just know that there's somebody working on it.
I think one of the quickest and easiest ways to capture anybody that gets rural water is through the rule, you're gonna catch the whole county, if you can go into Canaan and Innebety and Dupont, Rikers Ridge, all those rural water companies, and ask, can we send out something with your bill? And you're gonna, you're gonna catch all those rural water users, with the exception of whoever might still be on a well.
Would you like to be on the task? Good idea, Sarah.
But I will help you get the word out, if you can, I just tried to find the link, it's not easy for me to find on my mobile device, so that might be part of the problem, too, since most people use a mobile device, if you'll give me the link, I'll get it out on every place I could possibly get it, Facebook pages, and...
We do have all that kind of condensed on the county, we had a... We do have all that kind of condensed on the county, we had a broadband tab when they became broadband ready certified, so if you go to the county website and look under government, and then it'll say broadband ready's program, all that information is there, and they just.
I'll just give them the link, and they can go right to the page, but you might try those rural water companies.
Yeah, that's a really good idea.
They, they're gonna go to everybody that gets rural water, and that's everybody, so that's gonna get all that on you for you.
Thank you.
If they don't have internet at home, they're not going to the county.
They're not gonna go to the county website.
Hard to get to those things.
They, that's where we can use, we can utilize library and other public, you know.
Mobile devices is what's gonna make the difference. Almost everybody has a cell phone now, but it's still gonna make a difference if you can get it, because there's some things that you can put on that, that goes on the water bill, this is come to town, call to pay your water bill, or do a Kent water, a Canaan water, and if you can get the water companies to help you, maybe the person at the desk there can help do that for them, or it shouldn't, I would think most of your rural water companies would be helpful with that, so.
Thank you.
So, there's several different ways you could do that for folks that don't have the connectivity.
Awesome.
But you'll give me the link for each.
Yes, I would, yes, I would definitely get that for you.
Anything else?
It's good, thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Yes, good to see you.
Appreciate you. Richard, do you have something for us?
You're welcome, sir.
The packet I gave you is off my inventory, on this packet, you don't have it, I'm not gonna throw too much into that.
I'm definitely, I don't know about.
It's like an amendment preservation act, we have to change it a little bit, thanks to your illustrious Senator Todd Young.
He's yours, too.
He's not mine anymore.
Well, yes, he is.
He is now, because if I had my way.
Well, I understand that sentiment, but.
The problem is, is he did just what I told you, he was going to do, the next denial act, he put in the Violence Against Women's Act, got it passed, and stuck it to the local law enforcement to enforce, that has a 90% error rate in it, and when I looked at it, it's right here, there's 300, some thousand, 214, 44,000 rejects in Indiana, or something like that, 90% is 33,000, but anyway, he sets up the local law enforcement, now, that brings me to my Second Amendment Preservation Act that I've been asking for for two years now, that you have to add one more thing, that if anybody comes in and that's what Todd Young wants to do, well, we'll just deputize your local law enforcement as a federal officer to enforce these laws, and then he'll go back to being your officer when he gets it done. So, I wanted in the act that says, no, anybody that is willing to be deputized loses that position in the county's office. Very simple, just another addition, he tried to get around SADA, and he thought he was trotting right along, in fact, they made news on it, but no, we can beat him, because all we gotta do is say, okay, if you deputize one of our officers, and they accept it, then that's killing us, so he'd rather work for the federal government rather than for Jefferson County, and again, I say Jefferson County should not pay to enforce federal laws, and that's what it's given to them, and what I'd think for anybody that's had somebody in the military, the new gal at the veteran's office, I've never met her before, but I will be talking to her, anybody that's been in the military can go, they've restarted what they call an honor flight, it is, if you're, World War II is first choice, Korea second, and then Vietnam third, and what they do, they fly you for a one-day trip to Washington DC, and it, I urge anybody that's got somebody in the military to tell them about it, haven't signed up with it, I, I got talked into it, but I'm glad I went, it's a long day, six in the morning until about 7:30 at night, but if you've had anybody in the military, and I will go down and tell her about that, because wives can't go, girlfriends can't go, they do need an escort, and the escort usually pays his own fare, and I don't know what that fare would be, but the veterans go free, so I did want to get that in, because that is, they started it up again this year, and if you're vet, you're eligible.
Funded federally? Is that funded through the federal government?
No, I don't know who's funding that, by the way.
It's individual organizations.
I have no idea.
Individual organizations that run it, so like, you probably flew out of Honor Flight Tri-State.
Yeah.
And so, they have their own local sponsors.
Yeah.
And then it's also the escorts, like he's, like he said.
The escorts, they.
They pay their, they pay their own way.
Pay their own way, but it, they enjoy it, I can tell you.
Sure.
And they all have to have an escort.
I've been an escort.
And they have to be under six, five years of age.
I couldn't go, I can't even go to anybody else's escort now.
That's what I meant, but on the Second Amendment one, and now, the other thing that's covered there is HR 1808 has passed the House, it's one vote away against banning every semi-automatic firearm in existence in this country, and I worried you about that last time, too, around, and by the way, on these, we have 14, this year will tell you the 14 Republican senators that are always helping that these gun laws get passed, and Todd Young is on that list, by the way, that's him, and the Violence Against Women's Act, where he took the Dixie Isle on people, you're gonna have to stop that, I don't know, in Indiana in 2022, had 342,653 denials, you take 90% of that, I don't know what that would fall in Jefferson County, because there's no way to find out, but if this kicks in, I can tell you in a year, I'll know, because you're gonna be putting bills, and then I have a number, so, you know, I told you it's coming, and he'll do it to you, and he's done it to you, and I think that's the only thing I had here, the Violence, the bill's already passed the House to ban every semi-automatic weapon, not just pistols, rifles, pistols, anything semi-automatic, the bill has been passed in the House, it's 74 pages of banned firearms, and the one thing they'll come back with later, because that, as usual, they're probably gonna have the brains together if they're in Washington, is they didn't list any revolvers, so I figured they'll come next, and.
And bold actions.
Huh?
And bold actions.
Yes, bold actions is also not included, your 22-tube rifle, but anything that's semi-automatic is banned by HR 1808, and they're listed, and Senate bill, which was a post office bill, another Todd Young one, S, Senate Bill 2938, has got a ton of gun control in it, and that's stuck down, you have to go down several pages to find it, but it's in there, after they name the post office, and all the other things, you'll find it, several pages down, but outside of that, that's all I had tonight, except on my Preservation Act, which I still want, except I wanted to say now that if they deputize one of our officers, that officer's saying he'd rather be a fed officer than no longer work for the county, and I would be back again to ask you to pass that one, that you only got a few words to add there to make it go. Any questions? Anybody like to have a copy of what they got, I got copies.
That's DEFCON News?
What? Yes.
Okay, okay, I'll take a copy. I'll take a copy.
All right, any more comment from the audience, Steve?
One quickly, tomorrow, we have a RDA meeting at 10 o'clock at the Mid-American Science Center, we're, project approval probably tomorrow for 5.9 million for the Hannah Revett tech project, and I think it's about 1.3 million for the Destination Madison, and we have come up with a list of potential projects for Ready 2, and on that list is the airport.
I'm calling it JPG, economic development.
But that is that we write you, and start thinking of some other things that you can come up with. We just hope we get funding for Ready 2.
Did they want to call it Ready 2? I'll have to have a certain.
Repeat Ready or Ready 2, I, we just want to have it happen.
You're working hard at it.
We're trying.
Yep.
It gets difficult, when you give money, it gets difficult. But we do appreciate your support and continued support.
You got it. Anybody else in the audience? Well, thank you all for coming. Wait a minute, I guess they, let me go, let me do these two guys real quick. Yeah.
So, I know I keep talking about this, but we'll get this stormwater management schedule out here shortly, we're gonna, I'm gonna meet with the contractor next Thursday, and we'll kind of set some things, and we'll publish one, because we want to talk to the public about what we're, what the plan is, so we'll just spring it in, should be, we have, the plan, zoning and subdivision ordinance technical committee has made their review of kind of the proposals from the consultant, we're, they'll put together kind of a draft, it's gonna, it's gonna be a combined ordinance rather than two, that helps in the definitions are the same in both, you don't have a definition of something in the zoning ordinance that's different than the definition in the subdivision ordinance, so they're all, they all should be the similar, so that should, should come out here shortly for the planning commission to review, and then it'll go to a public meeting, so that should be, could be in middle of November, could be early December before that comes out, but we'll be looking for something like that to, so get those updated. I mean, I sent comments back to the consultant on the Economic Development JPG project, and so he's been, we have some discussion on that, but then, once we get that kind of settled, then we'll get a cost estimate of what the project would be, so we can just talk about it even further, because I'm sure we will. I saw something with another customer for the railroad, Madison Railroad out there, so that's good, a little more, Adam is very excited about getting things going, so it's good to see.
I mean, I got Mark touched on about the jail, things are proceeding nicely, they got what they call building dry, so the weather won't bother us anymore, they're starting to do some painting, outlining, ductwork, the lights, carpeting, all that, everything, it's, I think we're ahead of schedule, but we're really doing well, and we've tried to bore off anything as far as getting equipment here, and we worked around the switch where we had to, so that's in place, so we're doing very, very well concerning the lack of materials that everybody else is fighting out there, we've got a lot of it stored on site, too, and other places, so we can go to it when we need it, not, oh, I'm sorry, it'll be six weeks out, so, that's all I have.
Well, I guess to mention that, I guess we talked early on about Jack Kraus.
Yeah.
Kind of our lead.
Owner representative.
Yeah, out there for us, and, you know, we met him, actually, before we even started the jail project, really, and he was offering freely advice to us.
Like he knew he was gonna get it, but that he's, he has been a great partner. He has saved us so much.
Yeah, a lot, yeah.
Quite an individual.
And a lot of headaches, so, you know, we're not missing.
I don't really, I don't really want to say what, I mean, I think they can, for what happened, but he passed away on. Tuesday. Tuesday. Was it Tuesday?
Yeah, probably.
Yeah. Maybe with cancer.
Yeah, fighting cancer. Yeah, it wasn't very long once he told us to. Right, no, it's a little late. Anyway, yeah, we missed him, we will miss him, but he's passed it on to another good fellow, so we'll be all right. Appreciate everybody's thoughts and prayers for him, I don't have anything else here for right now, but treatment meeting is October 20th here, Mike is doing pretty good, don't you think, Bob, Bob, AJ have been in comments, so we'll appreciate what, I have the recording, it keeps public, I work what we're doing, what's going on with this committee, team, and I guess, if I have anything else, yours? Sarah? Nothing, okay.
Motion to adjourn, gentlemen.
All in favor, say aye.